Good evening. This meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education will come to order. It is April 15th, and we are here in the district office. I would like to recognize everyone in the audience, everyone watching at home. And if we could please stand for the pledge.
This is Wally's first spirit class. Saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Justice for all.
That was adorable.
That was awesome.
That was fabulous.
All right.
Mr. Jones, would you like to call the roll?
Sure. Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Zini.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here. A quorum is present, so the meeting will progress. Public participation? Anybody submit anything? No? Okay. We need to adopt the agenda. We have a rather robust agenda ahead of us, so would anyone like to move approval?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. I would like to add and just move something up. We have an agenda item 10C. This is a request to speak on a non-agenda item from Audra Trapp. I would suggest or propose that we move her to after the request to speak on agenda items, but prior to the approval of minutes, so between three and four.
I had it three, eh?
That'll work.
I moved it up, so if you refresh your agendas, you'll see it someplace.
Okay. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zini.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes. That passes. We can move forward. So next, it's, we're very honored to have our state representative here today. Mr. Mark Fraser. He represents part of our school district, and we are looking forward to your presentation tonight. Welcome and thank you for coming out.
Thank you all for having me tonight. So I want to thank all your unsung heroes. I saw him over there. Mark, he was fun. And so I think we did do that. But no, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. We have a lot of things going on with the state of Ohio when it comes to education. I wanted to talk about, what's going on in the state of Ohio, as well as what's going on with the community investment area bill that I am currently monitoring. And so a part of me that prompted this all was a conversation with your superintendent and treasurer who made the way we adopted your resolution where we talked about the bill impacting your district. And then I was surprised that I had seen the ramifications of that from this board. So in the nature that I've addressed, what you deserve for in person, and you're very difficult to work now, but it's been about a year and a half working on this legislation. And so to start on the high note with what's going on in the state of Ohio, today we passed HB 170, which is a coronavirus relief bill targeted at schools to provide additional funding. I believe this is the third round of funding that we are going to provide to those groups in the state of Ohio. The total is $170 million. My hope for today was to provide a breakdown. LSE, which is the Legislative Service Commission, is still working on that breakdown, but as soon as I come, we will email that out to the superintendents, and the superintendents will pass it on to the treasurers and the boards. We worked very hard in the day with Patterson of the last GA in order to provide input not only from our school districts and our treasurers and our superintendents, but also to really understand the ramifications of the bill when it comes to how it impacts the local school districts. What we see in HB 1, which is the House bill that is the top priority for the Ohio House, which is the school funding model, Cuff Patterson, the dish PA, that has now been ordered in the budget, which should be voted on next week, is a $2 billion additional investment made by the state of Ohio to capture growth, poverty, disability, and improve the school funding model for high-growth, underutilized, or underserved communities. So what we see throughout all of the state of Ohio is nobody is on the current funding program from the state of Ohio. Either they're on the guarantee or they're on the cap. The model had been broken since 1997 when the Supreme Court ruled that it was unconstitutional, and every single GA has been unable to address or unwilling to address. We've spent about the last three years in the Ohio House in order to try to get input from working groups, the development model, to try to address those overarching concerns. An act created upon the people are on that are used and is dependable. And I'm sure that your treasurer understands the ramifications of having inconsistent funding from the state when it represents only 38% of your funding specifically in this district, and the need to not only be able to budget and plan with the local taxes that you see property taxes as well as additional state funding. And with your district debt is growing, we see the same issue with Licking Heights as well, with high growth not being perfectly captured. And typically, I don't know if you were on the cap, Licking Heights said they're on the cap or Y, and that came in 2017, 1 million. I think you guys are pretty close to that, maybe a little better. And maybe to talk about what's under that, your school district, but Licking Heights typically, if you can, that I use when addressing it in the district. When it comes to the other two districts, the goal is ultimately to keep everybody honest. And so when it comes to the local share, there's also a typical component that we see, or Vegas thinks is not wanting to change the model and having school districts that are harmed by that. And so there's a lot of effort to make sure that nobody is harmed by the change in the model. So the $2 billion, year one, we are not doing the property index change, so there will be five years of that being made then after the first year. But ultimately, API obviously prepares it, will get those details out to you so you guys have a better idea of what's coming down. It also requires concurrence with the Senate and signature by the governor, but the way that we understand it is, is everybody is very supportive of solving this issue, and hopefully we can get our arms crossed for the border. And so is there any questions that you guys have about that portion of what's going on with the 870 we worked with the school funding going on?
The hospital 70, the COVID aid.
170.
That's what I thought you said, and then you...
I don't know Newark, Ohio, so I'm a little bit of a crank.
That's what I thought you said the first time, but then just now you said 70, and I was like, I thought it was 170.
No, 71 million is capped.
Got you. That's the one, that third round code aid is, that's one time.
That is correct. And we also have the American Rescue Plan, and that's not a mandatory one act, so there should be additional money coming through that as well. Those rules are still being developed by the federal government, and we'll wait to see what those rules are and what the obligation is that must be attached, because there should be these pieces attached to the federal law. And so when it comes to the CRA bill, so I came here to the council, so in 2018, we're working on a CRA expansion. And so there's two pockets of CRAs. There's pre-1994 CRAs and post-1994 CRAs. Pre-1994 CRAs require zero school board approval, full control by the municipality, the ability to offer 100% abatements without any conversations with the school boards or any kind of look at the fiscal impact on the property designation. We have about 40% of those pre-1994 CRAs still in existence since they were grandfathered in, and ultimately, they continue to be remaining utilized, and they're kind of a golden ticket. And so when it comes to economic development, there is a disadvantage for those municipalities and counties and townships that have post-1994 CRAs, because there's less of a guarantee and more of a negotiation. And so what we see in 1994 was the condition set on a 50/50 backstop income sharing agreement, also with stipulations for notification and those requirements. And so for about the last 27 years, nobody has looked at CRAs, their effectiveness and their ability to be improved. And so when we were redrawing the lines in Newark, Ohio, I was talking to our Economic Development Director, and they said, this is all we got. We got two expansions. We have to cover as much as we can, because otherwise that puts us into this post-1994 category. And I said, well, is it that burdensome to go into this post-1994 category? And they said, well, absolutely. We'll probably have to hire additional staff. We'll absolutely have to follow all of these additional requirements. We're going to have to charge fees to people. We'll have to renegotiate all of our agreements, and all of these other very, very strenuous difficulties that are in place. And so when I got appointed in November of 2019, one of my, one of my main objectives is to improve economic development for the state of Ohio. And so because I had a familiarity with CRAs, we started working on this in 2020. As far as what does it look? I had the objective, but I needed to get down to the granular or RC level for what is being required. And we also talked to a lot of interested parties that are across the board. And one of the things that you see is there's a 15-page verbatim agreement that is required in the Ohio Revised Code. And typically, we don't do verbatim agreements. We say, this is what you need to capture, and we want to make sure that you capture it, but we also want to provide you some additional flexibility. What we heard was that if somebody miswrote something, mistyped something, the agreement was potentially null and void. And so it was, should we look at that and try to do something better? There is also a five-year non-compete jurisdictional clause as well. And so we took an evaluation of that too, and we said, okay, if there is an economic event that happens to a company or a state, and manufacturers, employers have to pull out a state or pull out of agreements, and they recover, are they basically essentially prohibited from reentering the state of Ohio because they can't get any tax incentives? And essentially, yes. And so we kept on talking to our IPs, including the School Board Association, and I, and we said, all right, we believe that there should be some protections to prevent jurisdiction hopping, right? Everybody agrees with that. We shouldn't have people that go from one 15-year incentive to another 15-year incentive to another 15-year incentive. And so the biggest question was, what's the difference between two years, three years, four years, and five years? Nobody can answer that. And so we said, all right, we're going to move it down to two years to keep the jurisdictional protection, but also to make sure that if there's ever a catastrophic or an economic event or a business event, that we don't preclude people from doing business in Ohio. The other piece that we looked at was all the other economic development tools in the state of Ohio. TIFs, CRA, TIFs, enterprise zones, opportunity zones are all at the 75% backstop level. Also, the fee structure is optional for all of these. And so what we see is there's a $750 filing fee annually, a $2,400, $2,500 fee associated with the state of Ohio DSA one-time application fee. None of those fees are charged in pre-1994 CRAs, so there's automatically a disadvantage there. But on top of that, municipalities, counties, townships have the ability to waive that fee altogether. So then you also have an additional layer of competition. You talk to the Development Services Agency, you say, how much money do you generate off of this? They said about $80,000 a year at the state level. And I said, do we really need this fee? They said, absolutely not. And so we pulled that fee down. When it came to the local level, we had local jurisdictions that said, well, we want that fee still. And we said, okay, how much does it generate? The example that we had was across all of their economic development tools for a county in rural Ohio, they generated $18,000. So you can pay one-third of one person in order to administer these tools. And so what we saw was a continued collection of fee that was not equal across the state, and an unfair competition for both whether you collect the fee or whether you have a pre-1994 CRA, which is the golden ticket. And so we said, okay, we're going to remove the fee structure. And so what the biggest goal that we have is consistency across what our economic development tools are. We don't want a municipality, township, or county to say, we thought it was a 75%, we didn't have to go to a school board because all of our economic development tools are that way, but actually, it's a 50% for this. So we wanted to make it consistency across enterprise zones, TIFs, and CRAs. The other big thing that we also wanted to make sure was that it was reported appropriately. What we see across the board is DSA not being confident in the accuracy of the data. Not necessarily communities are reporting these CRAs as they are supposed to. They are not necessarily reporting the agreements as they're supposed to, and it's very difficult for everybody to access them. I was surprised to learn that DSA has a website that is available with CRA information, is not accurate, and it's very hard to get to from the public. So as part of this, we looked at the zoning requirements that's reported to the CRAs, and we said, do we really need to report this in 60 days? Probably not. We can capture it in the annual report. Can we capture more things in the annual report than what is being sent over to DSA and placed into a file cabinet that nobody looks at? We said, absolutely. So we strengthened the annual report that's due on March 31st of every year. We made sure that anything that is provided is posted online, and then you guys will have the ability to go online and verify all these agreements, see the information, instead of requesting DSA to pull an Excel sheet that may or may not be right, that they may or may not provide to you. And so at the end of the day, the goal is to not only provide better consistency, but better transparency for what these agreements are, accessing them, and not having just one entity say, hey, we might have that, we might not have it, but have the assurance that you are able to understand what the agreements are and how they relate. And so when it comes to legislative intent, which was a lot of what I heard in the last board meeting, the legislative intent is to provide better economic development tools for the state of Ohio, provide consistency to our communities, and to continue to appropriately invest. We are focused at right sizing the school funding program, adding consistency and transparency to our economic development tools, and using the federal and state funds that are provided during the COVID relief to get to the people that need it most, including our school districts. We had four other, we had three other COVID bills today tied to businesses, tied to bars and restaurants, tied to the hospitality industry, and tied to some other groups as well. And so we continue to try to mitigate the impact. We're also working on housing issues as well, and utility improvement, because there's a lot of, a 23% property tax increase in this, or property value increase in Licking County. And if we do that another three years, we're going to price people out of their homes. And so we're trying to address these issues on the state level, find realistic solutions, and we're trying to be as transparent as possible. I don't think it took Richard Jones very much time to set up a call with my office. Casey Perkins is my ninth grade English teacher, so I hope my grammar was correct today. And I try to keep very open relationships with all my superintendents and all my treasurers. And if there's anything that we can help you guys as a board, besides just providing the basic information that's yet to come out from LSE, all you have to do is ask, and our office would love to provide it. So with that, I'll open up for questions, comments, or concerns, including from the audiovisual department. Okay, okay.
Okay. Anyone like to start?
I'll let somebody else start if they want.
I think Deb should start.
Okay.
Obviously, you can see why, as a school board, we're concerned. School boards take the biggest hit when big companies come in. We're looking at big companies that are coming in, and they're going to be making, what, close to 400 billion by 2024?
You'd have to give me some context of where you're getting 400 billion from.
It was, I don't remember where I found it. I was researching different areas, and that's what I saw. So it kind of is concerning to a school board who's going to lose a significant amount of money when these companies are in the billions. We're asked to give up, right now, a minimum of 50%. Now you're asking us to lose another 25%. And then you're tying our hands and saying, we can't even negotiate to get in on any of the money that is going to be recruited by the employees and the taxes that they're going to generate, which is a second hit for school boards. Now, I worked for the state of Ohio for a while, and I was working for the state when the whole Supreme Court decision happened. I'm not 100% convinced, regardless of what happens with school funding, that you're going to make up those billions of dollars that we're going to lose. I have not seen, I guess, my question back to you is, what companies, let's just use Edna Township as an example, what companies have said that they cannot locate here because of abatements? What companies have said that they're not going to do that?
Okay. So if I can start, there's a lot to unpack there, so I'm going to do my best.
That's why they made me go first.
And so when it comes to income sharing agreements, which I believe you referenced, that was added back into the bill. So we listened to our interested parties. We saw that $1 million was set in 1994. There's been a 78% inflation increase since 1994. Why is it this number tied to inflation? So we right-sized it to $3 million. We kept the 50/50 split in there, and we made sure that that was tied to inflation so we never have to deal with that issue again. So that should alleviate some of your concerns when it comes to income sharing agreements. When it comes to the CRAs that you guys have set up, no agreement that you guys have set up from a CRA perspective, so this is on the overarching CRA, is below 100% from what I can see. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so all of that will continue to be negotiated. You have one agreement under one CRA that is not at 100%. So there's a very big difference there. So everything that you have done is continued to be required to be negotiated under this law. The biggest thing is when you have a CRA that's set up with an agreement by agreement condition, you would have one agreement that would fall under that, where it's at 50% and not 75%. At the end of the day, I believe there is an income sharing agreement that would still be tied to that one.
No.
I'm not sure if there isn't one tied to that. So I do have a spreadsheet of every single JED that you have and every single CRA under that. So I've been trying to do my research. And so when it comes to those overarching agreements, from 75% to 100% still requires school board approval. 20% of CRAs that are post-1994 fall into this 50% to, or the 75% to 100% category, or that's 50% to the 75% category that were previously negotiated from the 50% to the 75% level, but 80% and over 50% are at that 100% level. And so we could provide the statistics that we have from DSA, but what we see is the majority of the negotiations that are going on are at that 100% level. And so the argument is not what school district or what company is saying, we can't move here. What they're saying is, what municipality, township, and school board will give me 100% and I'll locate there? Because they still want to come to Ohio, just there's regional competition among cities and among communities in order to attract businesses. And so at the end of the day, we added the income sharing and tied it to inflation, wanted to make sure everybody was kept whole. All of the CRAs that you have set up from an overarching standpoint would remain negotiated and would not change. The agreement language still has the same agreement language that you have. You don't have to touch that or revise that, because those main conditions that are in place are in the initial agreements, so you don't have to rewrite that. And moving forward, there's still this collaborative relationship that we want to see between school boards and townships, municipalities, and the counties for that 75% to 100% range. The issue that you have is when it comes to TIF, enterprise zones, and opportunity zones, all of those are at the 75% range. And we're trying to make consistency across our tools, reduce the fees and the impact that are arbitrary to the businesses, and make sure that we have conducive conversations with everybody.
So how, how is this going to further collaboration between, like, say, school boards and townships? How is that forced, that kind of collaboration?
So it's the same collaboration from what I see today, based on 100% of the agreements typically being negotiated.
Which has been our only leverage with negotiating with the townships.
Which you would still have, because a 25% is still effective, income sharing agreements are still effective. But what we want to make sure is everybody comes to the table and they have the same backstop, because what you see is halting or delayed projects, and we just want to make sure that we provide the best economic development tools that we have. And when it comes to school districts having contentious relationships, what we see is that we have a lot of people in the economic development field that have good relationships with their school districts that are getting these 100% abatements and attracting large swaths of development to their areas. And then you have these other communities that are small, rural, and often don't have the staff in order to maintain these post-1994 CRAs, having the inability to compete. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we have equality across our economic development tool. It doesn't all just go to the pre-1994 CRAs, the large urban areas, or those that have wealth in order to be able to manage these. And we create tools and processes that are efficient and effective. And so that's what the intent of the bill is. If you feel like you're losing your leverage, I mean, the biggest thing for me is to have transparent and cooperative conversations, where get on the front end, where you make sure that, hey, we, how much money are we bringing in? What is the income sharing agreement? Are we getting a check or are we getting a percentage? Or do we need a 75% or 100% TIF? What we see across the board is most of these agreements are 100% or well above 75%. So you still have the ability to have it, but we want to make sure that everybody has an equal playing field to negotiate appropriately and in good faith, and we feel like the 75% consistency is beneficial to everybody in Ohio, because it's not just Southwest Licking. It's Youngstown, it's Akron, it's Dayton, and it's all of these rural townships that are out there. We added an amendment to include local home rural townships to give them the first time ever to have economic development tools at their disposal. So we're trying to open up the opportunity. Local home rural townships only consists about 28 townships. It's basically a pilot program, but we're trying to provide the opportunity to expand economic development tools to not just those with good county relationships, but those that have the staff and the ability to monitor these.
Unfortunately for Southwest Licking, I think what you've done for us is you have in fact decreased our leverage by 25%, tied our hands by that much more, because we do in fact have a contentious relationship with our local government and...
And there will be no sharing.
And there will be no sharing. There will be, in fact, lack of further consistency and transparency.
Yep.
And in doing that, unfortunately, we will no longer have the opportunity to participate in the continued income that we have seen in the past. And then as time goes on, we will then be much further impacted by the housing that comes in from the families that come in from the businesses, and our local taxpayers will see the brunt of this bill. That's what I think will be the impact of this.
If I may respond, how much income do you receive off of these income sharing agreements as a, as a school?
Well, I can tell you from just one of them, what was, what was JEDS to last year? Over $1 million, correct?
Because of the economic development program under the CRA?
Yeah, the Amazon, it's Amazon building.
Yes.
We get 28% of that JEDZ2 income tax.
So yes, it's substantial.
Yeah. And so how would this bill change that?
We want, we would not be involved in the income tax sharing. They will not share.
The income tax sharing is in there.
Yes.
I think the issue we're trying to get, the JEDS, did you include JEDS in that?
We don't, we're only touching CRAs. JEDS are going unchanged.
But the JEDS is where the income tax revenue is coming from.
We're able to negotiate us being involved in the JEDS because we have leverage at the beginning of the abatement.
Yes. And so once again, how does my bill change your current agreement?
Because they, they will not have to negotiate with us if they're able to get...
So for future agreements or for this existing agreement?
For future agreements.
This is future, nothing, nothing with current.
Nothing is current. We're saying for future.
And a perfect example was the last one where they didn't get the abatement.
Correct.
And there was no sharing.
And there's no sharing.
The school district was left out of everything.
Okay. And then, so this is under current CRA law?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's all dealing with JEDS. That's the issue. We're dealing with the JEDS.
And so that, so I've not tackled enterprise zones, I haven't tackled JEDS yet, and I haven't tackled TIFs. They're on my list, but I'm focused on the CRA side. And so the biggest thing that I want to focus on is your CRA agreements are at 100%, right? And those are negotiated, and those are going to remain. And so I can't control the relationship that you have with your local township and your local municipalities, right? That's between you and them. What I can be is as transparent as possible to say, hey, I'm trying to protect both entities' interests, right? We put the income sharing agreement back in, right? We kept the 75% negotiated rate. So anything between 75% to 100% continues to be negotiated. If you have any recommendations or concerns that we can do to improve the bill, that's why I'm here as well. But at the end of the day, we're trying to make sure that we have consistency across our economic development tools, as not to undermine our school districts, because actually we're trying to improve the situation at a very diligent level at the state level, increasing our funding, improving our formula, and making sure that you guys have the ability to plan for your costs. And we're doing our best there. But when it comes to trying to solidify our economic development tools, I wanted to make sure that you understood the legislative intent, because what I heard in the last meeting was my legislative intent was completely mistrue. Where I was getting involved in personal agreements with this school board, which I am not, this came from years ago, prior to the contentious relationship I believe that has been formed. And what we're going to continue to try to do is to listen to all parties and improve the bill. That's why the income sharing agreement came back in. It's because we heard the interested parties, we wanted to make sure that we accounted for the income sharing agreement, because it aligned with the other economic development tools.
Can I make one quick comment? Edna Township does not have income tax. So that's part of the concern is, it does not have income tax.
Right.
The only time it has income tax is within a JED.
In a partnership with a municipality with... In a partnership with a municipality with...
And so that's the reason we're getting a hundred percent abatements is because that a township is, is negotiating with us a percentage of that JED. So that's what we're trying to say is, you know, income tax sharing doesn't help us a bit. It does with city of Potoska because they do have income tax. And we have, it will not help us in that a township. And I believe it's going to be a...
But don't they partner with Reynoldsburg on a lot of this that has an income tax?
Yeah, but that's only, it's only over the JED itself. And we're not entitled to that JED income at all. We have, that's part of our negotiation process is asking them to share the JED income tax with us in exchange for the...
And, and the requirement that's currently there at a million dollars doesn't mean that it's below a million dollars that the municipality can't share in the income tax. That's just the required, required threshold. And so you would have the ability to negotiate that if you had a cooperative relationship and you'd be able to work with your individuals for any value less than a million dollars.
Yeah, it's not our same with JED, that million dollars on the plot of JEDs.
Didn't a million dollars change to three, three million?
Yep, three million tied to a...
So I don't think we're going to have, see a company out here that's going to have that kind of payroll at three million.
Not at fifteen dollars an hour.
I don't know if it's a, three million, I think...
We'll never meet that threshold.
I think, I don't know what, is three million's a cumulative number?
Okay.
I'm not, I don't, that's what I'm not sure about. Is that a cumulative number?
I mean, it should be tied to the individual.
Yeah, so I think maybe it'd take five years to get...
Put it back in when we increased it by...
Yeah, so maybe, yeah, so maybe it'd take smaller for us to get it when, for Potoska. But Potoska, we have an agreement already to share a dollar zero. So they, they, they were agreed not to lease over Potoska corporate parks.
I have one question that hasn't been asked yet, but everything I've read, that this is, affects commercial and industrial only.
No, that's not true.
Okay, that's what I was getting at because all these housing developments, those are commercial companies. So they just can come in here and build as many houses and flood the schools with more students and they'll, you know, be under the same...
So it's residential, commercial, and industrials, how CRAs have been set up for a long time. The CRA is set up by the municipal entity, the township with the cooperation of the county, or the county themselves. And so that, that structure has not been changed. And so at, at the end of the day, it, you want to make sure that your CRA map is, is accurate and appropriate for what you want to do. And you also should have a long-term zoning and development strategy for whatever area that you're in.
Which would be nice if, if they maintained the current zoning.
Zoning.
They maintained what they originally planned out over years.
Which I did not do. You can yell at me for Newark, Ohio for the last four years, but I don't think you can yell at me for out here except for the last year and a half. And so, no, I mean, at, at the end of the day, I heard about legislative intent here, and I wanted to clear that up. I have a friend of mine named Rhonda Loomis who pasted the, the article to me as far as what you guys proposed and, and said. And I just wanted to make sure that it was completely transparent for what we're trying to do. And so at the end of the day, I mean, we've tried to negotiate with the school boards to try to add language in. And by school boards, I mean the School Board Association. They, they, it's me negotiating with myself, right? Where I say, what about this, what about this, what about this? And I would recommend that you reach out to them and provide solution-oriented approaches to them. And we are willing to sit down and talk to anybody, as you can see today. Because at the end of the day, when you go line by line on a piece of legislation, you know it inside and out, and you know the reasons for it. And that's what I do. I'm carrying about eight pieces of legislation dealing from telehealth to economic development to coronavirus relief to children's medical insurance. And I spend a lot of time knowing this legislation and advocating for the people that it helps. And so school boards are going to continue to have a level of protection. You, you might not necessarily agree with the level, but we're trying to make it consistency under the law. And so at least you can understand the rationale, and that is not to subvert any of your agreements because literally only one agreement out of all the agreements that you have are under that level. And so the intention that you will probably see is seventy-five percent to a hundred percent is still something that's going to be seeked by whatever township you're negotiating with. Because at the end of the day, we see that predominantly at the eighty percent range across the state of Ohio. And so you're going to continue to have those negotiations on the front end. You're going to continue to have the opportunity for income share if it, if it hits the, hits the appropriate threshold. And you still have better information as far as what your agreements are because I don't have a whole lot of guarantee that you guys have all the information for all of the agreements available to you from the DSA.
I, I will agree to disagree.
I, I can live with that.
We do appreciate your time. Thanks for coming and talking to us.
Yeah, I, you guys pretty much got my questions as well. I appreciate your time coming out.
No problem. Unless there's anything else we can do to help, we'll provide you some additional documentation on the changes in the school funding and the impact to your district. And once again, our office is there to serve the people of the Seventy-first House District, for the time being, maybe the Seventy-second House District. But whatever we can do to help, feel free to let us know.
If school funding gets fixed, you can do all the CRAs.
That's what the agreement I was trying to make here, so I'm done.
You gotta do that first one first.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. And I'd like to keep our lines of communication open. Thank you so much. Okay. Said, we are now moving on to Agenda Item Three A, and we have Audra Trapp to speak about a non-agenda item, busing outside of neighborhood schools. So Mrs. Trapp, if you'd like to come up, when you get started, if you could just state your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes. Mr. Jones will be running the timer. When you have about a minute left, he'll motion or, or let you know. I will let you know that usually, usually the board just kind of listens. So there's not a lot of questions or anything, but we are interested in hearing what you're saying, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. So whenever you're ready, we'll begin.
All right. I want to make sure you guys can hear me all right then.
Yeah, just speak close to the microphone, please.
A little bit closer, or you can pick up the microphone off the end.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't need me holding it because... Yeah, we'll see. I gesture a lot, so I have a feeling it might end up somewhere. All right, good evening. My name is Audra Trapp. I live at five four two two Refugee Road Southwest here in Potoska. What else did you need to know?
That was it.
Okay, perfect. I am the mother of Henry, who attends Kirkersville Elementary School in the kindergarten program right now, and Oliver, who attends preschool at Milestones Learning Center. And I'm here today, obviously, in my capacity as their mother, but, which of course makes me their fiercest advocate. But before I go any further, I do want to pause and briefly give you some of my background because I'm sure it's not escaped anybody's notice that I'm perfectly comfortable up here. My father was the city councilman for many years of the town I grew up in, eventually the mayor. And I now work as a senior paralegal at a commercial real estate company. So I'm basically letting you know that I'm, I have dealt with just about every governmental board possible. So this is, this is nothing new for me. But I'm not here as paralegal, and I'm definitely not here as the mayor's daughter. I'm here because I'm concerned. I know most of you are aware and should be aware, at least, that the U.S. has been teetering on the brink of a childcare crisis for some time now. And the pandemic just pushed it off the brink straight into the abyss. And my own family suffered greatly because of this. Our former childcare provider had to close her doors. She could not reopen under the new COVID guidelines. And, and I apologize, I get very upset about this. These were people we had loved and trusted for a very long time with our children. And they were like family, but she goes, she couldn't reopen and be profitable. So when we should have been preparing our kids for re-entry into society, we were also now tasked with scrambling to find new childcare and, and getting them used to going back after months at home with us. And they had to do it now with new routines, new teachers, and new classmates. And I'll spare you the details, but it didn't go well at first. And then just a few months later, we had to deal with another transition because Henry went off to kindergarten. And Henry did great. He thrived. Ollie did not. He struggled. His one constant through everything had been his big brother, right? He, he was there at the old school. He was there at home with mom and dad when we were all stuck home, and then he was there at the new school. So when he wasn't there anymore, it was, it was not really the best situation at times. And we're very conscientious of it in our family, we're aware. And I think his teacher, Ms. Amber, can attest that at her school, anytime that Ollie was having his struggle moments, the quickest and easiest thing to do, we'd, we'd given her the hint, was go get Henry. Have him come sit and read a book to Ollie. It'll calm him right down, he'll be fine. You can go back to your, and, yeah. Multiple times. So you'd think that after experiencing a worldwide pandemic, not seeing friends or family for nearly a year, missing out on holidays, trick or treat, all of it, and constantly learning to readjust to the new normal that these kids would have endured more than enough. But that's just not the case because, once again, we're being faced with upheaval because you've elected to cease providing busing beyond neighborhood boundaries. That childcare shortage I just referenced, that has become an almost insurmountable obstacle, especially if you have to find one in your neighborhood. And before anyone thinks to themselves, but there are options. Yes, I'm aware of them. There's one, one in Kirkersville that provides before and after-school care that does not provide full daycare.
One minute left.
Okay. So what this means is that it's difficult for a, a family of two working parents to, to deal. You have two different drop-offs, two different pickups to everything. Other options were, well, there's nannies. If you can find one and afford her, sure. Or family, which obviously if we have the privilege of family assistance, my children wouldn't be here tonight. We don't have that. So then you're saying that the school needs to, the daycare needs to provide the busing? No, that shouldn't be passed on to a private business. This is something that should be handled by the school system to provide education across the board, the same education to all of its students. And when you're not doing that, it's morally and ethically wrong, and I'm pretty sure a little illegal. So I become very frustrated, and I become very emotional because this means that my children are going to miss out on something that they deserve just as much as the other kids because they don't live in the right neighborhood. And because they have two very dedicated working parents who do have to go to work because their employers hold their paycheck ransom if we don't show up. Am I allowed to ask any questions of the board before I finish?
No. The, um, this isn't a question and answer. It's for you to present to us what your concern is.
Okay. Well, our concern is that, as far as we're aware, there's only one or two schools, daycares. When I say school, I mean daycares that are being impacted. And I'm here to ask you to please find out which ones they are, see how many students are being impacted. Because you're passing, when you ask a private business to get a bus, that's being passed along to the parents. And now you're making us make terrible decisions. We don't all have the option to send our kid to somewhere else. There might not be room at the other daycare, the other provider. That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. You're fine. Thank you. All right. Three B Teamsters Local, seeing none. Southwest Looking Education Association. Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of Minutes at Four A.
Motion approval, second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to the financial report with Mr. Jones. Someone like to make a motion?
A motion to approve whatever number this is.
Five A.
Five A.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Jones.
You have the executive summary for the month end, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, fairly routine month. We did receive our final property tax settlement for the year. It came in approximately six hundred and seventy-two thousand higher than we anticipated. One of the, are still waiting on our homestead rollback. Sometimes those two, one could be a little higher, the other lower. So once we receive that, hopefully this, the month of April here, we'll have a better idea where we're at. But we did end up very well, and a little better than we expected. And expenditures are right on where we anticipated being this, this month. So I have no further comments unless you have particular questions about anything. We're running very well.
Okay. Anyone have any further questions? All right, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We now have the personal consent calendar. We could probably take all of them at once?
Motion to approve six A through H.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Is, is Ms. Oblinger, or are those really the right dates?
Yeah, so I was going to actually share a couple things. She noticed on her current contract this year that she, something in the contract made her notice that the pay seemed lower last year. And so when she went back and looked over the course of four years, she was paid in eighteen, not in nineteen fiscal year, not in twenty, but again in twenty-one. So the recommendations were not made. So she, we're trying to rectify that, so to make her whole. I also wanted to share, is there any other questions on that one?
No, no, no.
She did the work, but she did the work.
She did the work.
No, no, absolutely. That's it.
Yeah. She didn't know that she hadn't been paid. So she caught it, we're making it right. And then I also wanted to share the seasonal salary schedule. So we, we currently have the ability to bring on students of high school age to help in the summer with seasonal work. So we are going to do that this summer, not full-time positions because that's not allowed, but ten to fifteen hours a week. They'll be working with grounds and, do you guys want to shut those doors?
I just got a question.
Thanks. They'll be doing, you know, groundwork, they'll be helping with the elementary move of all the teachers in the classroom. And so currently it's set at minimum wage, and we would like to offer them ten dollars an hour to complete that summer work. So that's what the additional salary schedule is. I thought you might want to know that as well.
Do we have any ideas of how many students we might need or want to work?
I think they said, you know, ten to fifteen would be a nice amount.
Okay.
So it, it'll just depend on who applies and, you know, the low hours might impact some, but it might be a nice opportunity for others to start, you know, doing some light work, so.
Any chance that doesn't fill up? Would alumni students be eligible?
Once, yes. And anyone is eligible, including staff members, kids, once other kids are considered first.
That's what...
Yeah, high ethics law says we got to hire everybody other than staff kids first. And if there are spaces left over, then we can start hiring staff kids. You got to hire everybody else first.
Okay.
So we're going to, if, if the pending board approval tonight on the salary schedule, we'll be putting that out tomorrow at the high school. The kids will have the ability to kind of express their interest through a QR code and, you know. So we'll see, we'll see what, who's interested.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We now have some business items. Do we want to do them all at once or, well, we can't do them all at once.
Holy, what, A through E? You know what, there's some changes on the handbook, so A through C.
Okay.
Second?
There we go.
Hey, Jeff, if they're done, could you open at least one of the doors? Thank you. Thank you.
That was a first and a second.
Yeah, I have that. Discussion.
Waiting for discussion. There's no changes to the policy from the first reading to second reading. The second one is just for our usual ESC contracts for the services and then various seats that we requested for the coming, next coming school year. Anything on voluntary insurance, again, it's no cost to district for the voluntary insurance.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to student handbook, seven D.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll second. Conversation.
The, uh, the board needs to be corrected on that?
It's been corrected.
Okay.
I think we caught that.
Very consistently corrected, yeah.
That was really the only thing I noticed.
Yeah, that was me too.
I noticed, I noticed in the band handbook, under, I'm not going to be able to find it really quick. I think it was under discipline. There was a sentence that said, for further information, see the marching band section. And I could not find the marching band section.
It's on page six. At least I just happened to click on marching band and.
Oh, I see, so, so we're saying that's, okay.
I don't know, I haven't, I just know that's the section I just clicked on. And I can't get my computer to scroll at all, so.
And he didn't make changes, so we didn't review this again because it's the same as last year. So I would have to, we would have to look at it a little bit more closely if there was an issue.
It doesn't really, oh, that's the curriculum, never mind.
So it's like for marching band discipline? Is that what we're looking for?
I think it was.
So that says code of conduct under that. I bet you that's it, it's the code of conduct.
On page 15?
Yes, that's what I.
Discipline, discipline, carried out following.
And then 16 is the code of conduct and like the fences, so I'm guessing that's where it flows.
Yeah.
In his mind.
So that's, just was something that confused me.
We can just fix that to say C.
Yep.
You know, page, whatever, 16 or.
Yeah, it'd be good to have a reference to the page.
Yeah, I agree.
I see where you're seeing it then.
That's all I had.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. We are ready to move on to seven E, Board Policy DJC.
Motion to approve seven E.
So an email I sent you earlier today, some stuff was coming up when we're looking on the bleacher project. There's some miscommunication, misunderstanding of what work need to be done. Okay, hear me very well. So basically, the, the agreement indicated that there had to be basically a fat, flat, level surface and Dan Katen had to be able to go all the way around it. As you see a location where our current bleachers is, well, we don't have that. When we brought Dan Katen out to look at the site and everything before they bid, well, that was never mentioned. And it was buried like page four. It was never mentioned anytime until they came out to see this object in the site and they're going, you know, how are you going to get a road and you got to build a road? And we're going, oh, we didn't know that, but when you finally look at page four, Gar Miller didn't see it, didn't see it. It says they basically have access all the way around it. They've been able to negotiate with Dan to change, basically we're going to build a, need to build a road from basically where the parking lot is for a current high school there to where the new bleacher starts. And just about 200, maybe nine, nine and that, probably about 75, 150 feet around there of road. So they've been able to basically reduce the cost by about $35,000 to do that. But part of that savings, it's more savings, but they're going to have to get a bigger crane. The biggest issue is the press, is the press, new press box is about the size of a trailer. And it comes in on trailer wheels and they gotta be able to lift it up with a crane and place it at the very top of the new bleacher. So they need a very solid base. So they're going to dig out like 12 inches and put like number twos, number three rocks in there to build a very solid base for that crane to sit on to allow us, to allow them to basically put that new press box on that new bleachers. So that's one of the issues we're running into. The problem is they're supposed to start here in about a week. And the old bleachers, I believe, are gone now because national trails took them. They actually saved us 15 grand, they took them off our hands, took them away. And they still want them and, because it was going to cost 15 grand to have them removed, they took them for free, so. So that saved us some money there. But basically they need to get started on that, basically the pad. What's carried a pad for new bleachers? And that's, that's about 90 to 120,000 of the cost is that new pad. And that needs to happen like next week. Since this was missed, they're, you know, they're having a hard time finding basic people to bid on the project, you know. They got one quote, I talked to Brian Wolf today from Gar Miller. They're working on a second quote. He's going to be able to probably get a second quote, but he's not going to be able to get a third quote. He's saying, he's talking to people, they said they tried to talk to dump truck people. They can't get dump truck company to come out there. To be honest, even a second quote, they're getting from Kendrick, which is on site, they can't do it. They're just going to quote it. But they can't do it. They're just too busy because they're on our site and they're on their job. So we're a little stuck, a little bit, so. That's the kind of the biggest thing right now is we gotta get that part moving. With the, the, basically some of the other work needs to be done. We hopefully should have time. It says it's going to take about a month to get the pad down, the concrete poured, the footers in for new bleachers, which will get us time to get, hopefully get us time to get quotes for like the electric and the other items listed on, on that list, to hopefully get the three quotes. We're not required to bid it because it's not considered a school building. Got that clarification, I thought we was going to have to bid it all, but still, it'd been nice to get three quotes. There's no guarantee the price would have changed any. And if we would have got the price in the very beginning, we still would have had to pay this cost. This project is over budget. Pretty much athletic building came in over budget and the bleachers is now over budget. So the additional money is, we have money, we have about half a million dollars saying in PI contingency right now that we can use to cover this, to get the bleachers in. One thing we're looking at doing is that path I need for that crane is 15 foot wide. It's just because the original plan was to put it down, pull it all back out and put dirt right down again. And just a waste of money. So we're going to leave the rocks down and then from there either pave over top it or put a concrete way to a new bleacher. So right now they was only playing on about a four foot, basically sidewalk from where the new school was up. So that would have been wide enough people to walk in anyway, or be really handicap accessible. I told him that on the phone today, you know, he said, well, not even six feet is going to be tough. People going both directions, even on a wheelchair.
Right.
So with this way, we'll have a 15 foot path.
Okay.
It'll either be paved or concrete to the bleachers and I think it'll be a very nice entrance in there. It'll look very nice, it just, it's going to be, we were planning on spending the money, but we're going to have to spend the money.
Okay, I have a question.
Because I'm a little confused as to, you said it's from the new school?
No, from the old high school.
The old high school to the new stand?
Yes.
So does that mean that track shed, that building has to come down?
No, it's, we're basically dry zone go between that shed and, and basically the track.
The track, that's tight, that's 15 feet.
Yeah, there's more, there's way more than 15 feet. They're going to take some of the fencing out. Yeah, there's plenty of room there to do that.
I was like, that's really skinny.
They're going to have to curve around the light pole a little bit because they have some new drains. They put it in as part of the project for the high, for the athletic building. So there's room to do it.
Okay.
Without affecting, you know, anything other than we're going to have to tear out some of the fence and replace it and that new road. But I think in the end it's going to actually look better than the original plan.
So it'd be two birds, one stone.
Yeah, we are. And it's going to fully be handicap accessible. You can barely put two people, three people, four or five wide walking, which makes more sense than the original four foot wide sidewalk.
And I also think, I mean, I know this isn't super important, but it will make it a nice area for teens to like do their little senior, like spray paint days that they do. Since the middle, they used to do it in front of the high school, but the high school won't be the high school anymore. So they can have that pad.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
Honor things that they do.
Yeah, I really liked the concept, how it's going to end up. We just weren't planning on going there, but now that we have to go there, I like how it's going to turn out. I think it's going to be a nice entrance, those brand new bleachers. It's going to be very nice, it'll be very nice. It just, it just wasn't planned out, quite frankly, correctly. So what this resolution we're asking you to do is basically is, basically we're going to suspend this policy for that project and allow Casey and I enter into contracts to keep it moving. Where we can get three quotes, we'll get three quotes. If we can't get three quotes, Gar Miller is going to have to certify that the price they're quoting is reasonable.
That was my question.
Yeah, so that's in the public comments, is basically, we were just talking about the concrete around, around it. It's about $60,000. He goes, he looks at per unit price, it's about 625, he goes, that's a good price. He said, he's seeing closer to seven, this is, he goes, to me that was a good price, but it was still $66,000 and we need to get three quotes. But if this goes through, then basically he's certifying that is a really good price per unit cost and we're going to move forward. If it doesn't, it will probably impact the bleachers being completed before the football season.
Okay.
Because Dan has another project lined up and they can't switch them. Which is part of the reason, that's been one of the talk, can you move back a month or two? And they said, no, because they have another project set to go right after this one, so.
But at this rate, he most likely will be able to get two quotes.
Yeah, he said he will get definitely four, most of, he'll get two. And hopefully in the areas that we can get three, we're going to get three.
Okay.
That's why I told Brian again on the phone, we gotta get three, we're going to get three. And that's why I have worded there, I put it in public content so everybody can see that is, where we can get three, we're going to get three. And where we don't, they're going to certify. I know it's kind of out of the blue, but it just hit us, you know, last week and then when negotiations, I had a chance to get to the board, talk about it, but the board may have worked out a good time to be able to do this. I asked the board to please consider this.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to special board meeting, seven F.
I can talk about that. So we finished contract negotiations Wednesday morning. The SLE will be voting and hopefully ratifying a new contract on Monday. So we'd like to get together, hopefully if you're available Tuesday or Wednesday, to vote on their contract.
Because you were not available on Thursday.
I am not available on Thursday. Thank you.
I think we should do it on Thursday.
I could just say off the bat, I am available either day. And the earlier the better for me.
Tuesday works best for me.
Me too.
Yeah, Tuesday's great.
Okay.
Yeah, I do think if that's all we're doing, we could have the meeting earlier if that would.
Okay, and I could do as early as 3:15, so.
That's a little early for me.
I mean, that works for me, but.
I can do anytime, you just tell.
That's what I was going to say, 5:30 is about as early as I can do, if that's all right with everybody.
5:30 Tuesday?
Yep.
That's the 20th?
Yes. Mrs. Moore, would that work for you?
Yes, 20th?
Yeah.
Oh, man, that's like.
It'll be located in this room.
All right, so.
Do you have a motion to approve it or I can just do it myself now, I don't know what time you're available, it's up to you.
Motion to set a special board meeting on Tuesday, the 20th of April at 5:30.
The purpose of the meeting will be to executive session if needed and to vote on intent agreement with the Southeast Asian Education Association.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll see everyone next week. Treasure items, eight A and B, if we can take together.
Motion to approve and thank you for donations.
Absolutely.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Appreciate donations, thank you. And then, then now just timing again and timing of getting the purchase order and the invoice in place. So again, we appreciate all that.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. Move on to superintendent item, Dr. Perkins.
Okay, we'll actually start with our extended learning plan. I'm actually going to defer to Dr. Moore and Mr. Tanschewski because they kind of did more of the grunt work on this. So I don't know if you, who wants to start?
I'll start with the.
Can you use a microphone, hold it? Not a little bear here you.
Okay. I'll start. So we are very excited to be able to offer plenty of summer services this year to help students who are experiencing academic gaps. Starting off with K3, they typically offer the summer reading program, but it's never been for K3. So we'll be offering it for K3 by invitation based on data that we've looked at and looking for reading gaps. And we're hoping to serve us right around 140 students in K3 in reading. We will be providing transportation and that will take place the first two weeks of August at the intermediate building. During that same time, we also will be offering approximately 120 students in grades four through eight reading and math remediation and intervention support to try to help bring those students up to grade level before coming to school in the fall. And then before Mr. Tanschewski talks about what we're doing at high school, the other thing we're doing is exploring some opportunities for students who are new to the country or experiencing language barriers to provide some services before school starts early August, provide transportation to help transition them to schools in the United States. And that will be specifically for students in grades K through three as well.
Where's the four through eight program going to be?
Four, they'll actually all be at the intermediate school with all of the transitions and construction of the other buildings. They'll be all held there except for high school.
Okay.
So high school, what we're going to do is offer a credit recovery program. The numbers will, I mean, just to give you perspective, this year we used 80 seats for credit recovery. That's students that were deficient, credit deficient in one or more courses. And that's, that number really won't be determined, obviously, until the end of the, end of the, end of the fourth quarter. So in about a month or so. But what we're going to offer it is in two ways. We'll, we'll do in person, we'll cover the core courses, we'll do ELA, Algebra I, Geometry, possibly Algebra II depending on, on need. We haven't really decided yet on the social studies area. It might be world history, it might be American history. The ten, we don't really have a lot of failures in American history and government. And science will probably be physical science. Also, we'll offer a, using the Admetum platform that we currently use and that we tend to use for the digital academy, we, we would offer that as well for students. Like I said, the number is, is yet to be determined and all of that will be provided at the, at the middle school.
Okay.
I have a question.
It can't be, it can't be the middle school. Middle school's going to be under renovation, so.
Middle school?
Oh, the old middle school.
I was like, no, it's not.
The old middle school, not the new middle, sorry.
Current middle school.
I was confused there, sorry.
I, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Is there like a cap limitation for this high school piece of the number of kids?
Well, I mean, in terms of number of students, I, I don't, I mean, we haven't really set a cap because I don't anticipate we're going to come anywhere near a cap. It requires 60 seat hours. We will, it'll begin the week of June 7th, it'll go four hours a day for three weeks.
So, which leads me to my actual question, which is, could this be an opportunity for, let's say, a student that wishes to maybe get a course out of the way?
No, because the 60 seat hours is remedial, is remediation.
Okay, thank you.
It's only for.
I, I knew that was going to be the answer, but back in my day, you could take something in the summer to free up another credit, so you could take a different elective or something. Yep, got it.
I have two logistic questions. Are parents expected to bring the kids or will, will we be providing transportation?
We will still be providing transportation for the, for the high school students as well.
Okay, and then my next question is, are we partnering with anyone in the community? Like I know in the community they have free lunch programs and whatnot. Are we considering providing any food or lunches for?
Only a half a day.
For K through eight, they will be only from 8:30 to 11:30, so they will be out before.
Okay.
Time.
Yeah, and for the high school, I mean, the four hours is going to, because of the seat requirements, it's gonna be difficult to, to, to feed them anywhere in between, because you're extending time. And I think the longer we keep kids there, the more reluctant they will be to probably participate in the credit recovery.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and then I also wanted to, I gave you guys an enrollment sheet. So, you, our numbers are just steadily increasing, but what you don't see on the sheet, which is interesting, is our kindergarten for this year. We're currently at two hundred and thirty-seven being processed, which is almost fifty more than we were at at this time last year. So, we're not sure if people are just really ahead of the game this year, or if we're going to see a, the optimistic part right there. Or if we're gonna see a drastic, drastic increase in our kindergarten numbers. So, I will keep you kind of apprised, there's not a ton, I mean, I wanted to show you our enrollment, like I do every few months, but there's not a ton going on currently in here. Now, I will say, sooner than later, once Rick and I have our follow-up with cooperative strategies, they have put together our preliminary draft of our enrollment in student growth analysis. So, that will be coming your way. Maybe even as early as the May board meeting, so that's going to be eye-opening. So, that's on growth. And then what's not on here under my name, but I wanted to share, I just found out prior to the board meeting tonight, we have locked in our vaccination clinic for our students sixteen and over. So, we'll be pumping out that information as soon as we get the details of sign-ups from health department, but it will be April thirtieth at our high school. So, that's gonna be really great.
I have a question on that one.
Yes, I may not know the answer, because we just got preliminary, but go ahead.
I am assuming that that vaccination clinic will not include the Johnson and Johnson vaccine.
I would, I would assume. I mean, he hasn't said what vaccine or what's happening, but I'm gonna go a little bit of a guess.
I believe that they halted it in the state anyway, but will we have a second one for those kids, three weeks after? Okay, awesome.
There'd be some sort of arrangement, yep, they're working on all of that. So, they had just asked last week for a survey for who was interested, so I was very impressed that this quickly, they turned it around and they're coming on site, which is so great for our kids.
Yes, absolutely.
So, it'll be during the school day in the morning, so they'll, they'll be able to, a couple out of window to participate. So, I wanted to share that as well.
And I'm assuming it requires parent approval and all of that, correct?
We have to get all of that. They said, this is your initial plan, the date, and then we're gonna give you all the follow-up of what logistics are and how it needs to be handled, correct?
Okay.
And no cost, correct?
Yep. So, that was good too. And that's it for me.
All right, quest to speak on non-agenda items, Teamsters, seeing none. SLEA, seeing none. We have an executive session before us.
Motion, sorry.[1719.52]